Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. I think we have one special guest here today that Commissioner Karski is going to introduce.
Oh, yes, thank you. My parents are in town for board meetings for my mom, so my dad was bored and I said, "Come on down here." And I'm hon- I truly am honored to have him here, so welcome my father here, Ed Karski. They're down from North Dakota, so it's great to have him here.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome.[37.61][37.61][applause] And I want to thank you. I understand you were in years of public service, serving as a department head, so thank you very much for all that work. And he walked here this morning from the Sheraton, so he's got, he's way ahead of all the rest of us in steps, I think, so, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.[64.81][64.81][applause] One nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I am going to give everybody a warning. Jill Franken with the City of Sioux Falls Health is going to be joining us. Her schedule was a little complicated this morning, and so she'll be joining us on Zoom about 9:10 or so. So I'm going to finish up whatever business item we're on at that time and then let her give us an update on kind of latest information regarding COVID, everybody's favorite topic. So, all right, with that, meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger. Just a reminder to silence your cell phones. And Carol is here this morning if you need a listening device. That takes us to routine business. I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
You need to unmute yourself, Commissioner Barth.
I'm working on it. Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Fender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. I was waiting for one of the commissioners to make a comment about that being the first time Commissioner Barth had been asked to unmute himself.[146.22][146.22][laughter] But we are all glad he is here, so. All right, that takes us to second item, which is to approve the commission meeting minutes for September 29th, 2020.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in, or roll call vote, please.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Fender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item three, bills to be paid in the amount of $270,627.84.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? All right, roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Fender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item four, reports. There are none. Item five, personnel actions. First item is to consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Fender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have several items for you evidently this morning. The first is to consider a motion, or I'm sorry, to recognize significant employee anniversaries for October 2020, and our list is fairly small today. We have Jennifer Ziterich, who's a caseworker at Human Services, celebrating five years of service. Linda Race in the Register of Deeds office, celebrating 10. Steve Van Wy at the JDC and Michael Mayer at the Highway, both celebrating 20 years of service. And then Julie Meyer at the Sheriff's Office, celebrating 25. I don't know, do we have anyone with us? Looks like a small crowd this morning.
Well, we do appreciate all that service. That's amazing, so, thank you.
Thanks. The next item is to record the county department volunteers. And our list is slightly smaller this month. You'll see 170. We went through and made sure that everybody was actively volunteering due to COVID, so, excuse me, our numbers did go down, but still impressive that we have almost 200 people volunteering with us each month.
Absolutely. It's always very humbling to see that list, so thank you very much to all those folks.
The next item I have is to consider a motion to accept the resignation of Robert Litz, our auditor, effective December 31st of 2020. You'll notice that your materials include a letter of resignation from Bob outlining several areas of his thanks to many people throughout the county and notifying us of his intent to resign effective the end of the year. Bob here.
I don't see auditor Litz.
Well, I know he's, oh, actually, he's coming right now, so I'll give him a minute or two to talk.
Okay. We're talking about your resignation, so I don't know if you wanted to make a few comments.
I'm Bob Litz from the auditor's office, here to answer some questions, if you have any. Bob, thank you for your years of service. I've followed you, as you're well aware, for probably about 15 years now, so I probably wouldn't be here except for the fact that you resigned as a city councilor and was able to follow you through the years. Appreciate your years of service. Thank you very much.
Well, Dean, the auditor's job is going to be open soon.[381.22][381.22][laughter] We've had a healthy competition, I would say that, Dean. And I've always, I've always respected you, and we've always been gentlemen about it, and I really appreciate that.
I will second what Dean said, but I've got seniority on him and you from previous elections. But thank you again for the dedication and the commitment, because it's really not an easy job to be a public figure, especially with the hassles that we're all dealing with nationally and frankly, occasionally statewide in the whole voting process and the changes in accounting and finance systems. So I'm sure you're going to enjoy your retirement, and you deserve it.
Thank you, Jill. You know, I would just say that Minnehaha County in particular, South State of South Dakota, our election integrity is still intact. And in many, many ways, this is just another election. It just seems like there's a lot more noise out there. That's what I got to call it, is noise, because that's exactly what it is. But, you know, the integrity of South Dakota elections is still here, folks, and just go vote. Your ballot will be counted, and that's the bottom line, so.
Well, you've said it many times, and we've heard it many times, and I think some of us have picked up on that. Accuracy is more important than speed. And I think people are going to have to learn how to anticipate that, because this year's election is going to have a lot of absentee ballots, I'm sure.
Well, you know, the country of India, when they have an election, it takes them six months to tally all the ballots. California, it takes two weeks. And I love, I know people love to kick California. They've never been there, but they have a very robust security system in California for the ballots. Takes two weeks. And I think with these absentee ballots coming in the way they are, unless the state laws change to accommodate that, I think that elections are going to make another paradigm shift with the absentee ballots and the counting of them.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Yep, I do just chime in with everything that's been said, but also, you and I met when we campaigned together.
Did.
So that's, met with our campaign director. It was the first time I'd met Bob, and that's probably been about 11 years ago now, or maybe a little more, I'm not sure. But thank you for what you do, and you have a tough job. I wouldn't want to be the auditor. So I'm not running for your position, no way.
Well, I got to commend this commission, too, because you guys, you're about governance, and I really appreciate that. Very seldom that politics seeps in here. It's all about the good call and the judicious use of taxpayer dollars. And I, I don't see where we could have done better over the years. And Madam Chair, your leadership for this jail project that we went through, that was huge. It came in, you know, it got everything done and under budget, and that's almost unheard of in government these days. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you, then. Obviously, that was a strong team that we put together that did a lot of that work. And I also would just like to thank you. I really appreciate you staying through this next election. You didn't have to do that. And so I really appreciate you being willing to finish strong in this election, and appreciate you giving us your decision now so that we can have time to do a robust search, because I've spent a little time looking at your job description, and I have a degree. It is not for the faint of heart. It's a challenging job with really multifaceted responsibilities. So, and we do thank you for the fact that you've always, always stood to keep elections secure and preserve the integrity of those elections. And, you know, the recalls that you've had to do have proven you out on that. And so, thank you very much.
Good to hear.
All right.
Make a motion to accept the resignation.
Motion and a second. Anybody else?
Quick point of clarification. Evidently, we don't need a motion to accept it. We just need to record it.
Okay. I wondered about that, so. I didn't think there was probably a harm in doing it, but I do believe that is what state law requires. So thank you.
Thanks.
All right. All right, thank you very much. So Bob, Carrie has one more item, I think. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Barth.
Jill is on the line here now.
Oh, okay, thank you very much. Jill, thank you for joining us this morning. And I told folks at the beginning of the meeting that your schedule was complicated today, and so we appreciate you joining us. I think you're muted right now, but if you want to unmute yourself, or if somebody else needs to unmute you, there you go. If you would just be kind enough to kind of give us an update on where your department sees things going with COVID right now. I know that, I don't think it's ever left the front page of the newspaper, but, you know, there has been some trends that have changed recently. And if you could just give us an update on that, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, actually, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you so much. And appreciate being able to do so remotely. It's certainly much easier to talk without a face mask on for a period of time, so this actually works out really great. And I want to congratulate Bob Litz on his retirement. I just caught the very tail end of that information that was being shared. You know, quickly, you can see this chart that's pulled up right now, and I want to remind everyone that you can see that this is active on our website. Every day, we update this information. It's on sioux Falls.org/covid19. And I would really encourage all of you and the general public to pay close attention to this daily. You can see our active cases are trending in an upward direction, especially since, you know, probably around the end of September here, we're starting to really see an increase in cases, the active cases. And those are people in our communities that have the ability to transmit the illness to others. And so, that's one that we pay close attention to. You can see our daily new cases, our new daily cases. It's pretty volatile. And that, you know, really, some of that is a variation based on when testing is completed. You know, samples are sent to various labs or completed in various labs, and some, and on the weekends, there tends to be less testing completed. And so that's why you see some of that variability up and down. But you can see that it's pretty volatile, actually, and there's quite a few we're seeing an increasing trend starting to happen. But most notably is the lower right-hand corner, the hospitalization rate. That is what is, you know, obviously the one that we have been all paying really close attention to as well, because that is a resource that we have to make sure is managed, and that we as a community are doing our part to mitigate the spread so that there is hospitalization capacity for those who need it. And so you can see, we're starting to see some increases there. And even when you look prior to September, we were seeing far less for hospitalizations. They were really running in the 40s pretty consistently for a while, and then they started bumping up into the 50s. And now we've seen them go quite dramatically from the 60s, 70s up to, you know, above 100 for the two hospital systems in our community are hospitalizations. So, you know, because of this, this really takes us to a new kind of level, then, of what we need to be doing as a community, how we need to be behaving as a community. And so yesterday, you heard the mayor talk about the fact that we are going to be leading the way by saying it's time for our community to step up and do more. We have to mitigate the spread. We have to mitigate and decrease transmission in our community. City employees are going to be required to wear masks when they're interacting with the public, when they are less than six feet apart from each other in common spaces. That's going to be now a requirement of all city employees. We have to maintain our workforce to be able to, you know, manage the city's business. And so that's an action we're going to be taking. And we are encouraging businesses to do the same. You know, I've been really impressed with the county, Minnehaha County, and how you've managed within your buildings and how, you know, jury trials, et cetera, have been managed. I just got off a conversation with Judge Homan this morning, and I'm so impressed with the work that's being done to really mitigate the spread while still doing the business of the county and the work of the courts. And so I think anything that you can continue to do in that regard to also be with us, to be that role modeling for the rest of the community is really important. We don't have to, you know, shut down our community to be able to mitigate the spread. We just simply have to do the things in our community that we've been talking about. I doubt there's anyone in our community that doesn't know what they should be doing right now, and that is being, you know, physically distancing from others, wearing a mask, staying home if you're ill, monitoring your symptoms so that if you see that you have a fever, that you are staying home, that you use good respiratory hygiene. Those are the things, you know, that we need to be doing right now. We have to be doing each and every one of us. But that still can allow us, then, to interact, but in a safe manner with others, and conduct our business as we need to. So those are the things that, you know, we're really going to continue to encourage. In addition to that, we are absolutely monitoring, you know, the demand for services such as our ability for people who don't have an option to isolate and quarantine safely. We're working with county human services and other partners in the community to make sure that that's available in the fall here, because we know we had a lull in that demand for that service, which was called the Recovery Center, but we know that demand will start increasing in the fall. And so we're working towards getting a increasing capacity to be able to help people that way. We're also going to provide more communications to the community on a more regular basis, again, trying to do that at least every other week, and then we'll certainly adjust that as information is needing to be shared. And then also just really continuing to, you know, increase the work and communication with our, with our partners throughout the community. So I think that kind of covers, you know, an update for you, because I'd be happy to also answer any questions that you have or things that I didn't cover that you maybe would like me to speak about.
Thank you. Are there questions this morning? Well, oh, Commissioner Barth.
Struggling to unmute. Jill, we're very lucky to have you as a resource in our community. Not every, every county has a Department of Health with your degree of professionalism. I have a couple of questions. How quickly do you get a result from an influenza test? Is the test reliable?
Well, you mean, I'm guessing you mean a COVID test?
But I have a question on influenza also.
Okay. Well, if you, a COVID test, there is, it's varying depending on the kind of instrument that's being used to run the test. And so the sampling is pretty consistent. You know, you can get sampled very quickly. And then it really is based on how much demand for testing there is. There's only so many finite machines out there or instruments, and each, and there are varying types of instruments. Some can run it as quickly as 15 minutes or, you know, pretty quickly, but there, and then some, you know, would take a little bit longer. The, the accuracy of that test, you know, it's, there isn't a test out there that's 100% accurate, but there, you know, there, there is good accuracy. And a lot of that just really depends on how well you collect the sample, as well as, you know, running the test and following, you know, all the protocols that, that need to be followed. But then regardless of that, there can be occasional false, false results. But that's why, that's why it's so important to, to continue to do the other interventions besides just being tested, you know, monitoring your symptoms. Because if you are running a fever and you are feeling ill, even if your test comes back negative, you have something going on. And so you should stay home until your symptoms have abated and you are well again and able to interact in the public. You should be wearing a mask so that at any time you start developing symptoms, you are not putting yourself in a situation where you have exposed others to a virus or some, some illness. And so that's why it isn't just one intervention that's going to work in our community. It's multiple interventions that are going to make a difference.
Thank you very much. And my other question is influenza. When, and I've already gotten my vaccination, and I hope everybody else thinks about it, but when do we expect maybe to have influenza begin in the community? And do you think that our current methods of preventing COVID might prevent influenza from spreading?
Well, first, the first question is, if we, well, let me take the second one first. I think you asked, if we're preventing COVID, we'll also be preventing influenza. Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, absolutely. That is, that's, if you're, if you're using those mitigation measures right now to mitigate the spread of COVID, those are going to help in reducing the transmission of influenza as well. But the thing that's really terrific about influenza, terrific is probably not the right word to use, but we have, we have a vaccine, so people can get vaccinated against influenza and get some effectiveness from that. We also have good antivirals to help people not get so sick if they, if they start engaging with those antivirals early in their illness. Right now, better than probably what we have, what we know of, and those, and those measures to help treat COVID are getting better and better, and they're finding new and better treatments and ways to use those medications for COVID and to help mitigate how sick you get. But we've learned a lot over the years about how to really do a good job with antivirals, with influenza. And so that's the difference there. As far as your, your first question, as far as when does influenza start impacting our community, it really varies a lot by what type of virus is, is present in your community and at what time. Because you can see a peak of, you know, influenza A that can start quite early, and then all of a sudden, you see influenza B start coming into community. Proinfluenza can be one of the viruses of influenza that can impact your community. And so usually, though, you'll see it start, you know, most generally in your months of, you know, November. And some of that is because people start also coming indoors and being around each other more. And so that's when you'll start seeing increases because of transmission being more likely. And into your months of, you know, it can go as late as, you know, March and April, where we can see that and start tailing off in May. But again, you know, coincidentally, that's kind of when the winter month starts easing away, and you get into spring, and people can spread out more and not transmit that virus as easily, so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Joan? For Jill, sorry. Jill, I just wanted to thank you for being here this morning. I really appreciate the work you guys do in keeping this website up to date. I mean, it is always the first source that I go to when I would like the latest information on what COVID's doing in our community and in Minnehaha County. So thank you very much. I know that doesn't happen magically, that that takes work. And so we appreciate everything you guys do to keep good, accurate information out in front of the public so we can make good decisions on that, on the basis of that information. So if there aren't any more questions for you, I'm going to let you go, because I know you have a 9:30 appointment that you need to get to, and then we're going to discuss some of this information a little bit as well. Thank you very much.
All right. That sounds great. Thank you for having me and allowing me to do it in this manner. And be well and stay safe.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
All right. Bye. So I probably should have mentioned, we've kind of technically moved ahead on the agenda, the old business, to try to, to get this in. We had reached out to Jill last week to see if she could be here this morning, and then we had some scheduling issues. And so that's how we were able to fit it on our agenda today. And I've had an opportunity to just visit informally a little bit with, with the commissioners. But I think what I'd like to bring up, and we had really started kicking this idea around late last week, but really intently early yesterday morning, as this, you know, as the city was looking at the same data that we were looking at and seeing this, this rise. And what I would like to see the commission do is, we have a department head meeting scheduled this afternoon at 1:30, and I'd like to get some feedback from the department heads as well. But I would like us to implement a similar policy to what the city announced yesterday, that anyone, any city employee or any county employee in the course and scope of their county business would need to wear a mask if they weren't, if they're not kind of at their primary business desk. Like the commissioners here, we're at our primary desk, and we're socially distanced from each other. And so the masks aren't as critical then. But anytime we're moving around, I know we all had masks on when we came in this morning, and I would ask that we do that. We request all county employees do that. It's a small thing. I know a lot of us in our, my other job, that's what I do all the time. Anytime I leave my desk, I put my mask on. It's now kind of gotten to be habit, just like putting a seatbelt on or something like that. But we have an obligation to keep our employees as safe as we can. We have an obligation to do whatever we can to keep our society as open as possible, as people are, have been able to enjoy some additional freedoms. I personally want to do everything we can to keep kids in school. I think that's the best thing we can do for the kids' future and for our nation's future. And so that's, that's what I'd like to see. We don't really have it on the agenda, so we can't take any official action. But I think if the commission is agreeable to that, that under the authority that was delegated to me in my position as chair when kind of COVID came in play to institute rules for county buildings, that I could do that. But I'd like to make sure that you guys all have input into that. Commissioner Karski.
I'm fully supportive of what you're proposing. Now, if you're outside and you're six feet away and whatever, hey, no problem. But if you're sitting at your desk and somebody comes up to you, out of respect for that person sitting at their desk, they don't have any control with you coming up to them. A mask, me wearing a mask isn't protecting me from you. I'm, you wearing a mask is protecting me from you. So if you are going to go to get into somebody's personal space, which is now, I think, well-defined socially as six feet, out of respect to that other person, wear a mask, especially if you're indoors. It just makes sense. It's a common courtesy. It has nothing to do with you losing your personal liberties or freedoms. It's just respect for that other person. So I'm going to ask that people do that.
Commissioner Bennega?
I would totally agree with what Commissioner Karski said and what you said. I think it's our responsibility to keep people as safe as possible. Secondly, I don't think we're violating anybody's rights by asking them to wear a mask. I think we all have the responsibility to keep this as under control as we personally and professionally can. And I would certainly endorse your conversation this afternoon.
And I would say, too, I think it's a good idea at this point. And when those numbers come back down again, we can relax a little bit. But at this point, our numbers are going up. We don't want to overwhelm our hospitals. That is our primary goal, is to keep the numbers down in the hospitals. And if we're seeing the numbers go up, then we need to act responsibly.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right.
Madam Chair, it's Joe.
Yes, Commissioner Barth.
I really think, I'm glad you have this issue under control. And I would just point out that it's not been that many years since we probably allowed our employees to smoke cigarettes in their offices. And it's, it's just a prudent thing to do. So assuming there's no grave objection, I think going forward with this small restriction is, is a great idea.
All right, thank you. I would note that, you know, the Sheriff's Department and over in the Public Safety Building, they had been doing it. They relaxed these rules a little bit during the summer, and then they saw some additional uptick in cases in law enforcement. And they've reinstituted these rules about a month ago, and, and it seems to all be working fine. So I don't really anticipate there will be any problem. I think a lot of our employees already do this, but we'll just kind of make it official. All right. That would take us back to Carrie's. That would take us back to Carrie's item E, 3E. Carrie.
Good morning again. Have a request for your approval to update some sections of the employee handbook. We're preparing for our countywide harassment prevention training, and that led to a couple of updates, and we noticed a few other things. Most of this is cleanup, not really a change in practice or procedure. 3.2, on nondiscrimination and anti-harassment. We're recommending an edit to more directly reflect federal statute. 7.3 for payroll deductions. We're updating the language to reflect the changes with the new W-4 form. 10.6 on pregnancy, childbirth, and parental leave. This is an edit to be consistent with the change we made to extended sick leave earlier this year. 11.10 on the employee assistance program. You might remember that earlier this year, we made a change to increase the number of free visits for our employees and their family members from three to five. That's just to make this language in the handbook consistent with that change. 15.10 on outside employment. This is not a change either. It's just a clarification that department heads need written, need to make a written request to the commission to take a second job or work outside the county. And 16.3, we're recommending removal of languages about malicious or false complaints to minimize the risk that employees will avoid reporting potential or valid concerns. And then there's two other small edits. We're recommending removal of the he-she language in section 12.5 and 14.7, and just replace it with they, so just a grammatical change.
Any questions for Carrie? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move for approval. Benega.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Bar, they're looking for your vote.
I'm aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Item 6, abatements, there are none. Item 7, notices and requests, there are none. Item 8, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item 9, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. So this brings us to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here today who'd like to speak during public comment? Did you want to give an update during public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
As you see up on the screen there, this has referenced the recent fire danger.
Jason, you probably need to identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. Late last week, I finally heard from the fire departments, and about half of them were concerned with possibly the implementation of a burn ban. You know, they thought it might be appropriate. We have had some fires out in the county. Generally, they've been harvest-related, and we haven't seen a lot of people doing controlled burns. So I think it's, it's, it's good that people are self-policing with that. But with what you see up here, it's been extremely dry and extremely windy. So I'd like the public just to be aware that, you know, please don't do any burning right now with the fire danger. And then, you know, next Tuesday, I'll have on the agenda for your consideration to impose a fire ban for whatever you guys would determine. So that's what I'm here for, public comment. And if there's any questions about that.
Any comments? All right. We appreciate you being here. I mean, for most of us, it's nice, it's going to be a nice, warm week, nice, warm, dry week. But that doesn't help the fire danger any, and, and wind doesn't ever seem to be far from the South Dakota Plains. So we would really request that people be very careful. Harvest has its own inherent dangers. But if any controlled burns could, we'd just ask your consideration not to do that this week. And we, if anybody has any input about a fire ban, it sounds like that will be on our agenda next week, and we as commissioners would welcome input on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment this morning? All right. Seeing none. That would take us to regular business. Item 10, Auditor Litz.
Good morning again. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And I was approached on Monday, the 28th of September, about RDID 059074, and the reported arrears on property taxes, interest, and penalties. I explained the process, calculated the numbers by month, and struck an agreement with the owner on a proposal for a tax deed payment plan, the details of which are outlined in the attached resolution. The action I'm seeking today is to approve the resolution so the property owner has an option to pay all taxes, interest, and penalties, and keep said property from the tax deed sale. After all obligations have been met, the county would restore the title to RDID 59074 to the original owner. Stand by for questions.
Any questions for Auditor Litz?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments, questions? Commissioner Benega.
Bob, could you remind me what the interest rate is on the past due tax?
I think it's just a little below 10%, nine-something if I'm, if I'm thinking right with the interest and penalties. And that, you know, I'm not sure how that is actually calculated, you know, but it rolls over every month and it ratchets up a little bit based on those numbers.
Well, I do appreciate your ability to find a solution that the owner can live with and we can still benefit from, and nobody have to go through the legal process to try to reclaim some of those dollars.
Well, I, I've always appreciated the fact that the commission wants to work with people's lives. Sometimes people reach a rough patch, and by and large, these tax payment plans have been working out, so.
All right. Any other comments or questions? We had a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Sorry, Benega.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bar.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. That takes us to item 11, which is an update from Kim Adamson, Coronavirus Relief Funds. Hi, Kim. Looks like you're joining.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. I'd just like to provide a briefing of where we stand with our claims from the coronavirus recovery funds from the state. As you recall, in mid-June, we learned that Minnehaha County would be allocated $12.7 million from the COVID Recovery Fund. And since that time, we've been working through the details to file claims, to, to access that allocation. To date, we filed about 18, we filed 18 claims. Our claims are predominantly salaries and benefits for public safety personnel. So that includes the sheriff's office, the jail, and emergency management. We filed claims for payrolls from March 1 through August 31, and that, those claims totaled $7.2 million. Since submitting this briefing to you, we did learn that the eight, the eight claims that were pending payment, as well as one other of the claims that had just been submitted for approval, have been paid. So we currently have collected a total of $6.6 million compared to the $1.3 million I have on the briefing memo. Based on our estimated expenses through the end of the year, we'd estimate that we'll actually have over $13 million in potential claims. It's unclear at this time whether we will have access to funds in excess of that original allocation, but we will certainly keep you posted as more details are revealed in that area. But we do expect that we will be able to claim the full allocation of 12.7. So if there are any questions about this process, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Any questions for Kim? Commissioner Danega.
Kim, I'm remembering that through this process, an outside CPA firm will be reviewing the claims. Do you know when that may happen? Is that at the very end of the grant year, so to speak?
Actually, no. Those claims are being reviewed by I. Bailey as we submit them.
Perfect.
So at the point they're approved for payment, they have already gone through that review process. We've had to make a number of revisions along the way to provide further documentation or clarification on various assumptions we have to make. So that review process is happening as we go through the process of submitting claims.
That's very good news, and I'm glad that they're processing those claims quickly. Certainly saves us time in the audit process at the end of the year when we have to do a legislative audit, so to speak. So thank you for that information.
Correct.
Commissioner Karski.
Just to clarify, Kim, that review by I. Bailey, that's for statutory compliance, that we're following all the rules as outlined in the program, correct?
That is correct. There's been a number, there's a lot of guidance that has been issued by the state that clarifies what types of expenses are eligible for reimbursement, and then also what types of documentation will be required to substantiate those claims. And so we have, I. Bailey is auditing for compliance with all of that guidance.
Any other questions for Kim? You know, I mean, we'd certainly like to thank the governor for making these funds available to the county. And, you know, this is a, it's been a tremendous amount of work for Kim and her office. And I just really want to thank you. It's been, it's a busy time of the year anyway for you, but I know that it's been a heavy lift. And so thank you very much for all the work that you've done to make sure that we've, are complying with guidance and then actually making the submissions for these, for coverage under these funds. You know, I think that the commission is going to have to have a conversation, you know, at some point about how we want to allocate these one-time funds. They are subject to recovery by the government. You know, even though we've been through the audit process, we've tried to do, you know, the, the state set up a process to try to make sure that the funds were reviewed, kind of a two-step process. They hired CCOG to help give us some guidance, and then everything goes through I. Bailey. But there is an opportunity for the government to, to look at the fund allocations later and recover them. We've reached out for guidance on that, and it appears that that's going to be open for five years, where the government could come in. You know, it's hard to predict at this point whether that's, you know, how likely that is. I mean, we certainly worked very hard to color inside the lines and, and comply with the written guidance that's been provided. But these are one-time funds, and, and, well, yeah, the city has some different options with how they use these funds, because if they got subject to clawback, they can issue bonds that they could use to pay back those funds. County doesn't have that same ability. But it is, it is a tremendous addition to our general fund, and we'll need to have some good conversation about how we want to use that going forward. There's, I think there's somebody on the Zoom call. If you could mute yourself, maybe? I'm not exactly sure, but we seem to be getting additional conversation. So the Auditor's Office. Yeah, it could be. So, all right. If there are no other questions for Kim, this was just a briefing. So thank you very much, Kim.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. All right. So that takes us to item 12, which is a briefing on unmarked gravesites from the Organization of Odd Fellows. And Paul Schaefer is here this morning to help, to give us a little background. What I've read about this so far is fascinating, so thank you.
Well, Odd Fellows is a fraternal, nonsecretary, and international fraternal order founded in the United States in 1819. And we have four tenets, and our tenet is to visit the sick, relieve the distress, educate the orphan, and bury the dead. And so we became aware of babies that were unmarked in the county cemetery. That's what the conversation started with. And so we followed up on that, and we found out that there's almost 45, 50 of them. So last year, and they go clear back to 1900 and stuff, and they don't, some of them don't even have names. They just say infant, and when it died on that. So last year, we put in, we marked 10 graves, and this year, we did 20. And we have encouraged several of our members, our coaches at football schools in Sioux Falls, so they provide athletes, and we have a good labor pool. And we can set 40 or 20 of them in about an hour. Takes a lot of food to feed them afterwards. Those boys can eat. But for, the thing is that through a series of conversations in the late 2017 and 2018, the members of Odd Fellow became aware of, there's over 200 unmarked graves out there. And so what we did is that they encouraged us to act, and we feel strongly that each life is a treasure. Each person's stories matters, and each person deserves the dignity of lasting acknowledgement that they lived. We have been fortunate to have family memorials by Gibson help us, and they have really helped us with the cost of the gravestones on that, and we really do appreciate that. And anyway, they, they give us the markers for about 10% of the cost. So you know that they are reaching deep in their pocket, pocket for the community on that. We welcome all private contributions toward this project, and it's huge. It's kind of like Carol says, it's kind of like eating an elephant one bite at a time, but if we don't begin, it's never completed. And every life is truly worth remembering. A grave monument or marker is a sign of respect, of fondness, placed with the intention of commemorating or remembering an individual. Conversely, an unmarked grave is awfully assumed to signify the disdain and contempt, and the underlying intention of unmarked graves may suggest that the person buried is not worthy of remembering and should be ignored or forgotten. And we don't believe that. So our goal next year is we would like to do 30 or 40, if we could, Gibson's will still help us out. And anyway, so we strongly encourage anybody to financially help support us. We welcome additional participation in this huge project from our community, or either membership or financial support. And for more information, you can, they can always email us, and that's at S-F-I-O-O-F-9@outlook.com, and we'll get, and we'll get contact with you. I will say that when we take those boys out there, and one of them was helping set a headstone, and I was talking to him, and I said, you know, there's a baby underneath there. And he says, there's a person underneath there? And I go, yeah. He goes, well, it's 1900. And I go, well, that's 120 years they haven't been marked. And so he went over and told his buddies that they'd be careful digging. I said, well, they'd go down a lot deeper than, than nine inches. But it shows you the perspective that kids have, that they really, they do something. Like, they were just setting markers. They weren't, this young man didn't realize that there was a person underneath there, because they have done those type projects before, and you just kind of go through the motions on that. So we, it's one of, it's a good, it's a good thing, and we're going to continue going for it. And so if there's any questions, oh, one thing, we went out, we have to mark those graves, and I'll tell you what, folks, those markers are not very well-marked. And we had everything all marked out, the individuals from Hills, the rest of myself. And we found a marker that was grave 31, 32, and we had to re-measure everything because we were about four feet off. And to get them in the right one, so I know that the county has talked about getting it marked, those graves marked better so that you can find the actual plot. And that's something maybe the county could look at and get an engineer. I was using a tape measure, and, and the fence has been moved from originally, too. So some of the old markings are not there. So you have to find a stoned one in there and then start measuring at five feet, 10 feet to get to the right graves. So it is a challenge to find the right graves, you know, the right plots to put the headstones on. So if you ever have an engineer that doesn't have any time, I suppose they, but anyway, if they put better markers out there or had markers placed at different places, it'd be easier to mark the graves on it. And this year, there's been like, like five more that have been buried out there. So it's not like you're decreasing it totally. It's also increasing on the, on the front side, too. So this is an ongoing project that'll take a while to get done, but we're committed to go forward, so.
Commissioner Hiberger.
Any questions?
Are all those that you're marking, are they all in the county cemetery, or are they across?
They are all in the county cemetery. We were going to try to get the county cemetery done first and then go to, to other ones. And that, and we did just babies, just infants this time. Then there's still 16 more infants that we have to mark before we start on the other ones. So it's quite a project.
Just one more comment. Paul joined us today because Carol Walter was not able to be with us for the report, and I want to thank Paul for coming. You don't probably know this, but he used to teach math out at JDC. He is a retired teacher.
Retired this year.
A retired wrestling coach. I've known Paul for a very, very long time, so.
Yeah, she was in high school when I was a guidance counselor, wrestling coach out there. And she did give me a son that there, and she did give me a son that made the state champ, so, you know, you know, things go deep that way, so, thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions, and I'm just amazed at the group that you've put together and the support you're getting, and that's extremely admirable, and thank you for doing that.
Very much. It's fun, though, and if you ever want to come and run a spade, we, we got spades and a lot, a lot of markers to do, so, anyway, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Yeah, and I know our highway department has worked in measuring out some new, um, gravesites, and so maybe we can help you out to make sure.
Yeah, that's clear on the north end.
Right. I know, I was going to say, but, so they have some experience in measuring those out, and they made comments too about how difficult it was, and so maybe we can provide you guys some help to, to accurately.
And it'll help everyone, you know, across the board on that, so.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here today. All right. Okay, so that takes us to item 13, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning?
Madam Chair, Jeff here. I just want to report that, uh, the items approved by the planning commission last week, and none of them were appealed. That includes the, uh, rock and gravel extraction north of, uh, Corson, which we approved was not appealed.
Okay. Well, thank you. It's probably good news for people in our audience today, so. All right. Anything else? Any other liaison reports? All right. That takes us to new business. Is there any new business? Commissioner Karski.
Uh, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, globally and nationally, and I am wearing a pin, um, honoring my wife, who's a 17-year survivor of breast cancer as of last week, so, um, you know, respect and honor those that are fighting that battle who have won, and unfortunately, not everybody wins, but, um, I do my best to wear a pin every day of the month of October to remember this month for breast cancer awareness, so.
And we have a commissioner who's also a member of that, um, club of survivors, so it is a very important issue that affects a lot of families, and so, thank you very much for bringing that up. Any other new business? Any other old business?
Just a.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Heiburger.
That's one quick one. Um, the SDACC convention was a couple weeks ago, and I, I noticed everybody had reported out on that, um, two comments on that. One, our own Dean Karski was elected as second vice president for the association, so in a couple of years, hopefully, we will have a president from Minniac County again, so congratulations to Dean. And my other one was, one of the, one of the breakout sessions that I attended was, um, put on by South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, um, and they, it was, Mr. Fifeley gave a talk on public comment, and he gave some very good, um, suggestions on how to keep ourselves out of trouble. I did send those to Carol Muller, and so maybe, I don't know if we want to talk about them, or if you want to just visit with Carol at some point about some of what those suggestions were, and whether we want to amend how we do public comment at all, or if we're happy with the way it is, so just wanted to bring it up. It was a very well-attended breakout session, and some good information, so.
All right. Commissioner Karski.
And, um, since you called me out, I'll call you out. Congratulations on a great year as president for the state association. You did a great job, and, um, maybe shook things up a little bit, but, uh, all, all done very well. Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks to both of you for your willingness to serve in that, um, important organizations, provides leadership to counties across the state of South Dakota, so thank you, both. It's not an insignificant commitment, so we appreciate that. Anything else? Old business? All right. If not, I'd entertain a motion to recess.
Motion to recess.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bennigan.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Um, Commissioner Barth, we'll call you back when we go into executive session. All right. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for coming.